I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Manona for Monday, April 18th, 2016. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood.
Here.
Alder Spate.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Homequest.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
For the last time here.
Alder Bussey.
Here.
Mayor Miller.
Here. Please rise for the plug of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would entertain a motion for approval before I do that. I think there's a lot of thank yous, but I want to extend one quick thank you to Acting Mayor Thomas, who covered during my brief illness. I had Guinness flu. And did a fine job, and I watched from Ireland, and it was a much smoother meeting than when the normal guys here, so thank you very much.
Swimming in the silla?
Yes, swimming in the silla, so thank you. I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes of the April 4th meeting. So moved.
Second.
It's a motion second. Any corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Could the clerk please record that as one? Two, three, please. Wow, I should be so lucky. We should be so lucky to have these turnouts all the time for these meetings, so. Tonight's a pretty special night for a very special person, and thank you, everyone, for turning out on quick notice to honor Alder Thomas, wrapping up 34 years of city council service to the city of Manona. What we'll do tonight is we have a few things to talk about. This will be, I assume, very much like a roast, or I hope it is, to keep her on her toes. And one of the first things, so that we can get you fed, so you stay happy here this evening, is we would like to present Alder Thomas. No, I'm not, don't think. Don't even go there. But here, thank you Kathy Thomas, 34 years.
My age.
Obviously not as good as Brownies, but the closest we could come up with, so.
They had Brownies last meeting.
Of course. Wow, it's a heavy kick. There are a few things which you trouble now.
Just remember, I know stories about you too.
Right here, let's see if there's any goodies in the wizards.
Not a coward.
The first, what I'd like to do is issue a proclamation that reads, whereas city of Manona alderperson Kathy Thomas, who did not seek reelection, concludes her term of office today, April 18th, 2016, and whereas Kathy Thomas was first elected in 1979 and has since served a total of 34 years on the city council, making her the longest-serving elected official in the history of the city, and whereas Kathy Thomas served most of those years while also raising two children, James and Elizabeth, and working for the Wisconsin Department of Health Services, and whereas because of her many years of service Kathy Thomas brought to the city council a valuable historical perspective, combined with an extensive knowledge of the legislative process, and whereas Kathy Thomas was a strong proponent of those programs and services valued by the residents of Manona, including our police, fire, and EMS, our park facilities, recreation programs in senior center, and our extensive public work service, and whereas Kathy Thomas also helped to shape the future of Manona by supporting the reconstruction of the Broadway and Manona Drive corridors, and whereas Kathy Thomas has also served the Manona community as a member of various community organizations and boards, including Manona Elementary PTO, Manona Youth Hockey, Manona Community Festival, Memorial Day Parade Committee, Manona's 75th Anniversary Committee, Playtime Productions, Children's Theater, the Manona Fall Festival, the Manona Fund, and the Friends of Manona Senior Center, and whereas Kathy Thomas's legacy is her ability to work together with other members to arrive at a balance approach, while always keeping the values of the Manona community at the forefront of her decisions, and whereas Kathy Thomas, Kathy Thomas's hands will be forever immortalized as the hands of the wizard at my dream park playground, as she was the model for the statue's hands. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Robert E. Miller, mayor, and on behalf of the city council hereby thank Kathy Thomas for her 34 years of dedicated service to the residents of the city of Manona, and for her extraordinary contribution to helping make Manona a superb community for many years to come. Signed in the city of Manona Dane County, this 18th day of April, 2016. And rumor has it, there may be some more proclamations to be made, so at this time I would like to invite two fellow Manona, Manona government officials, Senator Mark Miller and Representative Rob Call. Kathy, I think you need to make a return appearance to the podium, please.
Yeah, I think that before the night's over, you might lose as much as 10 pounds, you know.
That would be my thing.
All right.
I understand that.
All right, well Kathy, I've served with you during the entire time, I've been, lived in Manona the entire time you've served on the city council, and we've been together through a lot. And one of the things that I can always say about Kathy Thomas is you knew exactly where she stood. And you ever had any doubt, all you had to do was ask her, because she wouldn't hesitate to tell you. And that's important. There, I think there's not always well-elected officials tell you exactly where they stand, but you could count on Kathy Thomas to do that. We put together a proclamation for also, and we don't have all of the recognitions that the city put forward, they must have some inside knowledge and so forth, but even as it was, we had to go to a legal-sized piece of wood here in order to get it all on there. So this is on behalf of both Representative Call and myself, and so we'll share the presentation. Citation, whereas today, April 18th, 2016, alderperson Kathy Thomas concludes her term of office after having served a record-setting 34 years on the Monocity. And I served with some long-serving folks, as you may know, Fred Rissler is a long-serving elected official, and he's only got 22 years on you, so there you go. And whereas Kathy's legacy can be seen in the ordinances she crafted, the bricks and mortar of the city she helped build, and in the standards she set, which will serve to inspire those who follow in her footsteps, and whereas Kathy brought vast institutional and legislative knowledge to each and every meeting she took, she took part in, and every decision in which she cast a vote, and, I may have read one of your lines there. Go ahead. Okay. Right here. Whereas Kathy worked to have Manona remain one of the best cities in all of Wisconsin through her advocacy for programs and services valued by the residents of Manona, and whereas Kathy Thomas also helped to shape the future of Manona by supporting the reconstruction of the Broadway and Manona Drive corridors, and whereas Kathy Thomas also served the Manona community as a member of various community organizations and boards, including Manona Elementary PTO, Manona Youth Hockey. You played hockey, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I actually did play.
Manona Community Festival, Manona Memorial Day Parade Committee, Manona 75th Anniversary Committee, Playtime Productions, Children's Theater, and the Manona Fund. Kathy embodies the values of the Manona community and everything she has done. Now therefore, Representative Rob Call and Senator Mark Miller, on behalf of the Wisconsin State Assembly, under Assembly Rule 97, hereby thank and congratulate Kathy Thomas on the remarkable service she provided the residents of Manona, and sincerely wish Kathy and her husband Bill well in all their future endeavors. Signed by Senator Mark Miller, Representative Rob Call, and the state capital, Madison, Wisconsin, April 18th, 2016.
Rob, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I will. Yeah, I'm going to say a few things about Kathy. I know you know a lot about me, so I'm going to be very polite and very nice. I served, just as a frame of reference, Kathy has served for 34 years in elected office here in Manona. I'm 44 years old, so I was in 4th grade, I believe, when Kathy started her service. I know there were some breaks in there, but to give you an idea of how long she has served, but it's not just about the length. Anybody who knows Kathy and has served with Kathy, and Mark touched on it a little bit, knows the commitment and the dedication she has to this community, but also the forthrightness that she brings about to the discussion. I remember my, one of my first meetings on the city council, this is before I was mayor, and this is when we used to meet over in the community center, so you guys are lucky on a beautiful night like this, you have no view of the park and the pool, like we used to have to stare at that while we had these council meetings. We went into closed session, which was across the hall, and I don't even know, remember what it was for, and Kathy had some Brownies there for us, I thought, oh, this is sweet, this is nice, and all of a sudden she starts tearing in on the topic at hand. I mean, she would have made a sailor and a construction worker blush if they had been in the room, but she was blunt and to the point, and I thought, I can work with this person. And obviously we did, for a long time. And the true tale, I think, of any mayor is the one committee you do have to serve on is finance and personnel, and who do you put on to serve with you on that committee? And Kathy was somebody I put on to serve with me, first of all, because I liked spending time with Kathy. It's somebody that I knew had a passion for this city and its people, but also was an enjoyable person to be around, even though she was cantankerous on more than one occasion. But, but it was also because she understood the city, the financial issues that confront us, the personnel issues, and that historical knowledge is going to be a huge loss for all of us when it walks out the door. Now I know Kathy's just walking out the door and down the street and onto Winnicott and isn't moving away, but it will be a loss for all of you here to have to figure out how to fill that gap. It's something where I leaned on her heavily, both when I was a council member, when I decided to run for mayor, she was one of the first people I talked to, I think the second person, or third, my wife, Tom McCathy Thomas, not necessarily in that order, I forget who was first, but, because I wanted to make sure I was doing the right thing and that I had her support. And I have to say, I had her support, it was unwavering, and that didn't mean it was always on the same page. When we had our fights, and we had our fights, they were very private and to the point. I never left a meeting questioning where Kathy's position was on an issue, and I appreciated that, because as Mark said, we oftentimes have to deal with people, especially down in the capital, where they'll tell you one thing and do another thing behind your back, and they'll dance around a topic and not get to the point, and find a solution and a compromise. That has never been a shortcoming of Kathy Thomas. Kathy's always told you where she's at, she's willing to bend, she comes to a meeting willing to listen, change her mind, certainly trying to change your mind if you're on a different side. I always knew if she was not on my side coming in, I was in trouble, so I always tried to make sure I got her on my side. And it's somebody who I can look back at and respect, the time I spent with her and the amount of knowledge I gained from spending that time with her, not just on city politics, not just on why Manona's such a great place to live, but on really becoming a better person. I spent 10 years of my life, a lot of my time, because we also spent time on plant commission, so that's every Monday night together, as a lot of you folks know. And so you get to know a person. And what I got to know is a person whose heart is in the right place, whose love of this community is second to none, and who I know is going to miss this job, but is doing the right thing, because she's also got some grandkids she needs to spend some time with, and some gardening she probably needs to do, and some other things, but it's something where we're all going to miss you in this capacity, Kathy, but don't be surprised when the phone call rings, and we lean on you, because you are a pillar in this community, a source of knowledge, and sometimes we also just want a good laugh, and you always provide that, too. So it's something where, when Bob and I talked about this, I candidly had some other things on the calendar that, and it wasn't golf or anything like that, it was something actual work. But I moved, I moved a lot of things around, because Kathy has been such an important part of my life personally, myself, Jennifer, our entire family. I wouldn't be standing here today in the capacity as a state representative and as a former mayor, if it weren't for the support and the guidance of Kathy Thomas, and Manona wouldn't be the place that it is today. And Broadway and Manona Drive come to mind, a lot of the things were with just some conversations with Kathy, and she said, yeah, go ahead, we'll get it done, and we'll get the support to get it done, because a lot of you may recall, on things like Manona Drive, some people just said, pave it over and we'll be fine. And we still have those overhead power lines hanging there, and not have what I think is a true gem, a statement for this community, and it was Kathy, and Bob, and others, obviously, in the council, but Kathy really one who I leaned on to make sure that she was going to help get the support to get these things done. And that's only 10 years of her career. Think of what she did in the other 24 with, I know there's other mayors that will talk about it, too. So thank you, Kathy, I told you I wouldn't embarrass you, I just wanted to thank you. Your service is second to none, and it's very much appreciated, so thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
As you witnessed, we do not have a time rule on the presentations tonight, so you could roll, we're very generous. I don't want to pick favorites, so I'm going by alphabetical. We do have a number of people who would like to share some thoughts about you, Alder Thomas. The first is the ranking senior mayor here this evening, Mr. Dean Bowles, registered to speak about Kathy Thomas.
I was going to speak against.
Oh, okay. Oh, that's right, I don't have anyone in the four column, I'm sorry. Welcome, former mayor, current school board member, Dean Bowles.
Well, I was there at the beginning, and I was, I think, a senior mayor by two years, and Kathy came on the council, and I would have to echo remarks you've already heard about someone who, Kathy never lacked an opinion, and she was always forthright, and, but she gave her advice often privately, to help shape decisions before it got to, you know, voting stage or crisis stage and so forth. And I valued, I valued her judgment, and the, I think that she's a good example of the kind of community citizen that Manona has many of and are proud, and are proud of. Kathy, I've, I've felt honored to be a friend, and someone, and someone you've often give advice to, not always involuntarily, but you have, you've helped out a lot. I'm probably ending up on the school board because of you, too, and you'll have to answer to my wife for that, but I appreciate that as well. But I, but I thought that there was, at my, my time, when I was mayor, we were kind of moving from an era, from very committed local citizens, to an era of professionalizing the city administration. And we also had the issue of the South Beltline, that dominated a lot of our, of our work and effort at that time. And Kathy, I, she was a part of that, and I appreciate everything we've done. I think that, I value your counsel. I, I sat down and just jotted down the three things that I would remember about her. Good judgment, strong community values, and for me, she says, slow it down. Thank you, Kathy, and best wishes to you.
I know the next person wants to speak in favor, let there be no doubt, one of her pals, Susan Fox, also a school board member. Susan?
Well, those of us who know Kathy well know she does not like to have a fuss made about herself, and we had to convince her that she had to have one made tonight, because it was for us also, it was our opportunity to thank you for all you've done for our community. To say she loves Manona is an understatement, she is truly committed, truly dedicated, maybe more than anybody I've ever met. And, you know, Rob said a lot of what I had thought about, in that it's one thing to put in 34 years, but the kind of 34 years Kathy has put in are really unparalleled, I think. I mean, just in the, you know, it isn't all about just going to all those meetings and being on all those committees, she's been on every committee, chaired most of them over her time, but it's the real commitment, she's a doer, she's activist, she's a problem solver, creative thinker, and her, her knowledge of city ordinances, probably because she was involved in writing a lot of them, but I think is also unparalleled, her respect for them and respect for policy and protocol, she's a real believer in that. And for me, you know, being, it's one of the side benefits for me from having been elected to the school board, is I've gotten to know Kathy better, probably as a result of that, because she's been my mentor as far as boardmanship and protocol, and telling me, reminding me how important all of that is, and a sounding board when things become challenging. She's also the best devil's advocate I've ever met, you know, when you, when you tell her something you're thinking, she's, well, now, why would you do that? You know, you got to back up and rethink it, and she will come at you with all the questions that you should have thought about if you hadn't thought about them already, which is really a gift, because not everybody can do that, and not everyone will do that. I mean, that's the other thing, she does not hold back when she has a different opinion. She is blunt, and that's usually, that's a good thing. I've also come to know Kathy as someone with, well, we all know she's also got a strong mischievous streak and a strong sense of adventure, she's a lot of fun, loves to laugh. She and Bill have introduced me to Maine, she and Susan Manning and I took a cross-country trip in her son James's Porsche, which you've probably heard about as well.
Two-seat car for three people.
Two-seat car with three of us, and all the stuff I bought on the way, crammed in the back. And she's even tried to turn me into kind of a gardener, which I don't know if that's such a good thing, it's not quite so successful, but, but thank you for all that you've given the community and me personally, and I know, you know, this isn't a farewell, because I know you're going to continue, and we are already on several committees, and you're going to continue in one way or another to serve the committee, but you do leave huge shoes to fill in the council, and they will miss you a lot, as will we all, so thank you very much, Kathy.
Thank you.
And now the couple, the Litsfields, former mayor and Mary Ann. This is going to be good.
Well, not really, I'm not in politics anymore, so I don't have any written speeches, you know, to make, but I'll tell you one thing, we've known Kathy and Bill for as long as we've lived in Manona, and that's been many, many years. All I can say, and I think everybody here is of the same recognition, is they understand what Kathy Thomas has done for the city of Manona during her tenure here, and all I can say is that she has probably done more for the city of Manona than any other individual or group has ever done for this city. And we're glad to have known you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I could tell you a lot of stories, but I know you got a lot of people who want to talk, if you want to hear some good ones, give me a call.
Let me tell.
Well, here you are, we're so glad that you showed up. Kathy and Zona and I used to be called the Moon Beams, for a reason, for a reason.
Don't say it.
Yeah, we're not going to tell.
It is because Mary Ann mooned us on Manona Drive on 4th of July.
I've got my chances for the assembly. I would like to thank you, Kathy, you have been through a lot of things with me, a lot of things, things that I don't even want to say here tonight that are sad, but really some good things. In fact, she is such a good friend of ours, that she is one of the executors, for free, of course, she said she'd do it for free. I think she is the perfect politician, because she does listen and she does change her mind. You can say all you want about the wishy-washy, okay, yeah, he doesn't stand, she doesn't stand, you can, you can change their mind, you can change Kathy's mind. She is one who will listen and say, okay, yeah, I think that's all right, I think I could go along with that. She's not stuck. We appreciate everything you've done, we'll tell the stories later. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the third seat mate in that two-seat car on that journey, Susan Manning. And again, for any of the latecomers, if you would like to say anything, if you could fill out a form next to Supervisor Schmidt, please.
Well, who told you it was a three-seat car?
Two-seat, two-seat.
That is a two-seat car.
Yeah.
So, three guesses where I sat. Kathy was in the front, and Susan was in the front, so I don't think that's what's it. It's really interesting.
There was a seat in the back, a little one.
Thank you. Anyway, again, I-
I wanted one who had a butt small enough that would hit him.
Who's getting roasted tonight? Anyway, I am so incredibly honored to be here tonight, to just say a few words about Kathy, and I know we all feel the same way, but I grew up on the east side, and so I know a lot of the really good stories. She went to homecoming with Pat Richter, you know, I could tell you these all night long, so you have to come and listen to those at another time. Those are great east side stories, building legends for all of us who lived here and grew up here, and rode our trikes down the streets. And when we came back to Madison, my husband said, there's no other place I'm going to live but Madison, Wisconsin, I said, then you have to get a job here. So here we are, we were back in Madison, Wisconsin, I have this law clerk job, and I'm working with Bob Sunby, writing the code for the city of Manona. That's amazing, I couldn't believe that. And then I come to this town, and I meet this woman, Kathy Thomas, I thought, oh my gosh, no wonder we wrote rules that are really strict, because she's going to do it kind of her way. And here's what we learned about her way. So, there's so many stories we could tell tonight, however, for me, this one exemplifies the Kathy Thomas, the amazing, amazing alderperson that we all know. So I'm going to tell the story. We live on Bell Isle, it's an island in the city of Manona. If you've never been there, come and visit, it's an island, and when it rains and the water comes up, it floods, and I mean, it floods. We sandbagged probably three to four feet when we get the floods, it's an amazing occurrence. So until recently, we would flood with significant rains, the water, the lake would rise, the draining channels couldn't handle the flow, the island homes were threatened for several summers by these rising waters. We sandbagged the islands, and then to prevent the flooding, we put in sump pumps. So the big thing was, how many sump pumps do you own? Oh, I own 10, I have 15. And these would all be running at the same time, Rob would know about this, he'd come down, make sure the sump pumps were running down there, and Stoper would come down and help carry these 80-pound sandbags, and then it was, it was an amazing experience. So, we're out in the middle of the night, it's like 1 o'clock in the morning, and we're sandbagging, it's raining like crazy, it's freezing cold, we're miserable, and all of a sudden the streetlights start to flicker, just flicker a little bit, and I thought, the electricity goes off, dead silence, there is dead silence on the islands, there are no sump pumps running. And as I stood there, I could feel the water coming up my feet, and then coming up my legs, and I thought, oh my gosh. And we have elderly people, their houses are going to flood within probably 15 to 20 minutes, I thought, oh my gosh, so what do you do? I go in the house, I pick up the phone, I call Kathy Thomas, it is 1 o'clock in the morning. She picks up the phone, and she said, what do you want? And I said, the sump pumps are off, the electricity's off, we're flooding, and she said, come and get me, it's 1 o'clock in the morning. So I drive over there and I get her, and she said, take me to City Hall. So I take her up to City Hall, and before I know it, she's just checking everything, the city is moving, there is no question about it, but she's checking everything. She's making sure that all the electricity emergency equipment has been brought out, she's making sure that everybody from the city is alerted and doing what they need to do, and then she goes down and sits at the site where the electricity is cut off, this is 2, now it's 2 o'clock in the morning, for two hours while we wait for the electricity to come back on. On top of that, she goes and finds every single gas pump she can find in the city to try and keep the pumps running on the islands, to save the few homes that were going to flood within that period of time. within that period of time. That's the Kathy Thomas we know.
Thank you.
Just so you know, she was awake at 1:00 a.m., because I see her bedroom window, and I remember.
What are you doing, looking in my bedroom?
Next, we have Bruce McConnell. Bruce?
Can I stand and be brief?
Uh, no, because we have about a million people viewing this. This is like the Academy Awards tonight. Our viewership's at an all-time record, Bruce.
Well, I'm just gonna tell you how, what a great chair she has been, particularly public works, on several times that I've served with her on that committee, and she's done a great job. When other people were in charge, we sometimes had trouble with the quorum, especially on budget nights. And since Kathy's been there, we've never had a problem on budgets. Everybody comes, everybody's there, and I'm sure it isn't, because the brownies she brings just on public.
Hi, Mary. I know stories about you too.
I know, I know. I just wanna thank you for being one of the most amazing mentors I've ever had in my life. I absolutely would not have run for the school board without your support and without Bill. I don't know if you remember, I didn't, you know, it's really different to run for office than it is to serve in office. The serving was fine, the running is what I didn't wanna do. Yeah, and, and I didn't wanna do doors, and you went with me to Cottage Grove one afternoon to do doors. You probably don't remember that. And you were even asking people to put up signs, and you found signs. But I just wanna quickly tell the anecdote of when I first met you, which is, I clearly remember the experience, because my husband and I had, just had Monona Motors for a couple of years, and we wanted to put up a shutout back. And as it turned out, there's a lot of red tape to putting up a shut in back of a business in Monona. And after going through a lot of rigmarole, it came that I had to go before the plan commission with a set of plans, which I was very intimidated to do. I didn't really understand how city government worked. And in that day, I mean, coming up and speaking in front of a group like this would have been unthinkable, but I had to go do that. And I go to this plan commission meeting, and apparently, there was some sort of dispute going on between some property owners on Monona Drive over their signs. And I didn't really know the backstory of all this. All I know is there are a couple people on the plan commission that had the guy before me for lunch. And it was bad. I'm sure he went out to his car and cried afterwards. I'm just sitting there, and I go up with my little plans, you know, and everything was going fine. I don't recall if you said anything, but one of the most cantankerous individuals on that committee with the guy before me, I'd given some pictures of the place, too, noticed that there were some cars parked on the side of the building, which in those days, that wasn't paved, because we couldn't afford to pave it yet. And he started in on that, about what are those cars doing parked there on that grass? And you turned and you looked at him and said his name and said, "It's Monona Motors. They fix cars. That's what they do, so there's cars there." And, and could we please talk about this, this building that they wanna put up now? And you were my hero then. You might not even know me, but it was a window into your character, so thank you for making ordinary citizen feel good about being in Monona. And we love you and we're gonna miss you.
Thanks, Ray.
Mary, if it's any consolation, there's some current government officials who still don't know how government works here. Next, I'd like to invite up County Supervisor Robin Schmidt.
It's hard to have prepared notes when everybody else has said so much, and so I have to edit while I'm talking. So, anyway, it's hard to put into words the influence that Kathy has had on me personally, even though we've never talked about it. And I thought this would be a good opportunity for me to share with you just what you have meant to me. So, first of all, you have inspired me in many ways. You are the strongest advocate for the city of Monona that I have ever met. You believe in the city heart and soul. And to me, that's inspirational. And that belief is followed up with hard work. And to me, that combination makes the city a phenomenal place to be. Well, I've only lived in Monona since 1992, so I'm a relative newcomer.
Somebody else's house you live in, not your home.
That's true. That's true. It was very, it was made very clear to me early on that Monona was not Madison. And that, I, I thought about that for a long time and said, "Well, what does that mean?" And so, I've come to realize that one of the fundamental ways that Monona is different is because the high level of community involvement that we have here, fostered by leaders like you. I think that this community is the best place to live, to raise a family, to work, to recreate, and to be involved with your co-residents. And that comes from visionary leaders who set the example, and that's what you do. So, thank you for setting that example. That doesn't happen without giving a lot of your time, personal time and a lot of energy. And I think people don't recognize exactly how much work it is to be in the kind of position, leadership positions, that you've had for the city. I also wanna just mention a little bit about contributions that you've made. There's so many contributions that you've made, but there's one in particular that stuck out to me. And that is how you contribute to community fundraisers. And I have to say that if you ever have a chance to bid on homemade cheesecakes made by this woman, do not ever pass that up and bid as high as you can, because I won that bid one year, and I got the most, let's see, how did I say it? The most insanely caloric and amazingly delicious cheesecake that I could ever imagine. And it's things like that that help bring people out to support all the different activities that we have in this, in the city, and to bring people out willingly and with their open checkbooks. And that's what makes the, the city thrive. I also know that, it's been mentioned here before, that you're not leaving. You may be stepping out of political office, but you will be here, and you'll be here as a reference and a resource for the community until the day you stop breathing, because I think that's part of who you are, and that's part of why you're so loved in this community. So, lastly, I just wanted to comment that holding public office can be very intimidating, to say the least, especially for people who may be a little more introverted than others. But seeing a strong woman in the positions that you've been in makes people think, "Maybe I could do that, too." And so, it, it not only leads people to thinking about ways that they can contribute, to try to contribute the way you have, but it also gives people strength to know that they're not alone. And so, I thank you for that as well. So, for all your contributions from the Dream Park, to the award-winning library, to our fabulous community schools, our outstanding public safety services, new developments up and down Monona Drive and Broadway, for supporting innovative public works projects that, at the county, we've been able to partner with Monona on, to make Monona, again, the best community that we have. I know you won't stop contributing to the community, and I thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you.
Next celebrity speaker just goes by one name, Stoper.
Briefly, Kathy.
Yes, Tom.
On behalf of council's past, which I had a six-year sentence, and the people of Monona, I just wanna thank you and congratulate you on an extraordinary career, and an extraordinary commitment, and frankly, an extraordinary gift to the people of Monona. It's at this level, as opposed to the bozos on the Potomac, where we actually get things done. And you've been a big part of that, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Tim Torino. And Karen. You must, he needs a good leader, please.
I always ask, we're strong women. You know, a number of years ago, I was at a fundraiser down at the Concourse Hotel. And it was a really busy, busy place, and people were standing around, having their drinks and shaking hands and such like that. And suddenly, these two chairs opened up right in front. And I sat down real quick, 'cause my legs were tired, and sat down, and a fellow stands, comes and sits next to me. Turns out, it was Tony Earl, Governor Tony. And it was after he had left office, and he was standing there with a drink in one hand and a cigar in the other, and just, and we chatted for the longest time. And then, he looks up and he says, "You know, it was great being governor, but it was even better, it's even better being the former Tony Earl."
That's a great line.
That was a great line. So, we're wishing that for you, to become the former Kathy Thomas. Here we go. Now, Karen and I had the opportunity, Karen. First met Kathy when we were putting together the Dream Park. Very quickly, that was thirty-eight meetings, how many for your dog, but never mind. And fifty-two before we actually built the Dream Park. But the very first meeting that we had at the city council, we presented this to the council. And kinda got an idea, gave everybody an idea of what was going on, and what we wanted to do, and how we wanted to bring this twenty thousand square foot playground into the city, which, with no city money. And, but we needed people to help out with that. We then left the meeting, and by the time we got home, the phone was ringing, and it was Kathy Thomas, saying, "How can I help?" And she and Mary Pousine were the fundraisers, and were really so instrumental in putting so much of that together. And that was almost twenty years ago. Just a few years now. So, with that, thank you very much for that. Actually, Karen has a tie-in story with that.
I wanna talk about the first time we met. Do you remember that?
No, 'cause I don't remember a lot at my, but I remember this.
So, we decided to build the playground, and there was a certain amount of temporary insanity kicked in. And I did things I would never in a million years do otherwise. And Tim said, "Kathy Thomas is really influential on the council. Why don't you go over and talk to her and see if you can get her support?" And I'm like, "I don't even know her." Tim said, "Well, you should go." So, I went to her house on a Saturday, knocked on the door, didn't call first. You answer the door, in your pajamas. I was going to just briefly introduce myself and say, "Here's what we're doing, I'd like your support. You invited me in, you were so welcoming." I was there for over two hours. We were talking, and I felt like I had an EFF. And when we left, I had completely forgotten that my car was still running. So, it's been a fun twenty years.
Thank you very much.
I could say thank you for your contribution. Yes, been there, done that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who is brave enough to come up to the podium? If not, I would like to open the floor to Kathy's colleagues, the council. Mary O'Connor.
Thank you. I just have a couple things to say. The first time I became aware of Kathy was shortly after we moved to Monona in nineteen eighty, and I went to that old coal store down where the Habitat is now, and Kathy was working behind the desk there, and she was talking about being on the council. And it quickly became clear that she was very involved in what was going on in the city, and I, so I knew who she was for about twenty years. And then, I was on the library board, and Tom Metcalf was the mayor, and he, we were trying to get the library expansion project approved by the council. And Tom said, "I'm gonna appoint Kathy Thomas to the library board, so she can serve as a bridge between the council and the library board, and we're gonna get this done." And he did appoint Kathy, and she did a fantastic job. I remember one evening, being at your house for dinner, and you had the council there, and the builders there, and the designers, and everybody came together and kinda hammered out this plan. And it happened, and we're sitting in evidence of how wonderful it is. And you've been a wonderful supporter of the library all along. You're always willing to put forth motions for more money for books and all kinds of things, so it's very much appreciated. And I would second a couple comments earlier. I've really appreciated your ability to play devil's advocate. You can always come up with a new way to think of something, or think about something that no one has ever thought of, and it's just, it's been wonderful. And you've also served as a great role model for the women in this community. I don't think you realize how much, but we really appreciate it. So, thank you for everything, and I know that two more organizations she's involved in that Bob didn't mention, but I'll be seeing you on the board of the Library Foundation and the Education Foundation, which she's still serving on. So, thank you, Kathy.
Ran out of space.
Yeah. Thank you, Kathy.
Anyone else? Alder Spade. Well, Kathy, I owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude. I remember very clearly the first night that I served on this council back in two thousand eight. And you, you came up to me after that meeting, and you were very kind, you introduced yourself. And, you know, you just, you made me feel like I was part of this group. And I, I feel tremendously lucky right now to be on this council with, you know, five other people that I, I have tremendous respect for. I, I feel like that the tone and tenor of this body is, has been set by you through all these years. You know, when things were really rough, you were always fair and tough, but nurturing. And I've, I've learned a lot from you during these eight years, that I haven't been here all eight years, but I, throughout that period, I, I owe you for sticking with it and, and being kind but tough with each of us. I'm, I'm particularly sad about your leaving right now, because I'm reminded how important it is, and I don't know a, a good way to say this, but I mean, we, we need more women in government. And I, I think that all of us men in the room need to be paying attention to how to do things well, because I, I think that, and there's a HBO special that just opened this weekend that I happened to watch, it's called Confirmation, and it's about Clarence Thomas. And all the politics and ugliness of that aside, the big thing that came out of that was that the Senate Judiciary Committee back in nineteen ninety was all men. And government doesn't function well when only half of the people that live in the society sit at the table. And I am, I'm eternally grateful to you to, for all the other women that are in this room that are a part of government. It's been a growing number, and I hope in your lifetime, this council will be more than fifty percent women. You know, the U.S. Senate right now is only twenty percent women, and you've essentially been, you've accounted for that percentage this entire thirty-four years, just short three points. So, thank you for everything that you've done, and I will try to, to carry the ball forward in your absence.
Thank you.
Alder Wood.
So, I was thinking about my comments earlier today and realized, and I, even I can do this math, I've been on the council now tonight for seventeen years, half the time that you have. So, if I wanted to catch you, I'd have to do it again. That's, that's not happening. The breadth and depth, as others have commented, but the breadth and the depth of your commitment, not just to the city government, but to the city as a whole, is amazing. I mean, it's not, if you get into something, you're, you're in it seriously. I have really enjoyed watching you lead this body. People listen on this, on this body when you speak. We listened. And you were always, especially in recent years, able to, if it was something you agreed with, we could figure out a way to make things happen, despite facing incredibly tough budget I'm gonna miss having you around, and I hope you won't be a stranger.
Thank you.
To Nicole, staff. I don't mean to put you on the spot, if you want.
Okay, I will say something. When I became clerk, I knew that I could call Kathy Thomas and ask, "How do I do things, Kathy? How are things done here?" I knew I was gonna get information. I knew I was going to get information that was, you know, her intelligence. I've always commented, what a smart woman. And I really appreciate that you've been so available. Thank you Kathy.
Attorney Cole.
Just briefly Kathy, you're, like other people have said, you are the finest combination of compassion with tenacity. I mean, I've seen you do things when you knew it was the good thing and you would just get it done because you thought it was good. I've also seen you in front of developers and their lawyers. You asking the questions they didn't want asked and forcing them to give you answers. And you're as tenacious as they come when you need to be. I mean, I think, you know, they called Margaret Thatcher the sort of Iron Lady of Great Britain. You're the Iron Lady of Monona. Thank you for everything.
Alder Bussie.
It's been brought up how much you love Monona, that's obvious. I think that you're, you've mentioned earlier that you don't like to be, have the spotlight put on you. To me, you're not a politician, you're the epitome of a public servant.
Why, thank you.
No, thank you Kathy.
Alder Holmquist.
How did I get the seat? It's tough to go after all that's been said. For me, this is an amazing journey for me to learn from you. When I moved to Monona, we ended up in the neighborhood. And I remember going to our first neighborhood get-together and being swooped right into the fold and introduced to, to what all Monona has to offer. And from that get-go, it was never looking back that the spirit that you brought, the welcoming, caring way that you not only have shown that to me, but my family. The amazing times that you've had my son in your home and have found old toys of your kids to be able to share those with me has been a wonderful, touching thing. At those same moments, we have had great discussions and sometimes very passionate discussions about things that we may originally have disagreed on, but I have been happy to say, every time I have disagreed with something with you, it's been an amazing discussion. And we usually leave, or at least I leave, feeling like, wow, I learned something new and I have a changed perspective. So I thank you for all that you have shared with me, my family, my community, the city.
Thank you.
Among the accolades and gifts you've been showered with, I'd like to share with you from the League of Wisconsin Municipalities sent you a pin today from the league. Dear Alderman Thomas, our records indicate that 2016 marks 34 years of public service to your community. In recognition of your service, I have enclosed a small token of our appreciation. I hope you will wear this pin proudly. You've earned it. Jerry Duchesne, Executive Director. And all day today, the Facebook has been on fire with Kathy said a quick goodbye and everyone started pouring out. But there was one that I thought really summarized a lot of what was said here tonight. And that came from former Alder Lisa Nelson, who wrote the following. Thank you very much for your service Kathy. It was a pleasure serving with you and learning so much from you. That's quite a legacy you've left in Monona. Always thoughtful, smart, and my favorite word, you've always opinion who has set a fine example of how to balance being tough, compassionate, and solution-oriented. I wish I could be there tonight to thank you in person. Congratulations and hugs, Lisa Nelson. And I thought reasonable. That is a term that sticks with you. But I'm going to veer just a bit off course. We've heard about your, your public service, your giving to the community, but having lived next to you for 27 years, I want to talk about love. I love you as a neighbor, as a friend. What you and Bill have done for our family has been so special. And I have to leave the neighborhood if you're leaving this council.
I need it.
Yeah. I'm embarrassed. I do love you.
It's lawn mower.
Your lawn boy is leading.
want to break down.
So finally, I would like to present on behalf of everyone here, to have this kind of outpouring
What I will say is, you all think that, you know, I gave to the community.
of support and love from the leadership of this wonderful city is incredible.
I got so much more than I ever gave. I am so grateful that, I'm going to look at you in a mister.
So we've all come together to provide you with this crystal award that's presented to
It's been such an honor and a privilege to serve this community.
Alder Person Kathy Thomas.
I've meant so many wonderful things.
In recognition and appreciation of your commitment, leadership, and 34 years of service to the
We've done so many wonderful things as a community. And, and I do these things because it makes me feel good.
residents of the city of Monona, April 18, 2016. It smudges, so I'm not going to touch it and leave it in there.
I like to see the results.
The floor is yours ma'am.
I like to see people, I mean, when Susan talked about the flooding, you know, if there's something you can do, you do it. I mean, because it's for other people. And if we all do that for each other, that is what makes this such a great community. We, I said I wasn't going to talk, didn't I? Some people are scout leaders, some people coach hockey. Everybody does in this community where they fit in. And there's a place for everybody. And you can get people to do anything in this community if you can find what they like to do. And mostly, it's about being a good member, more so than any place I've, I haven't lived that many places. But it, but it is about what makes Monona special. It is, we all fit in and do what we can for one another. And so it has been my privilege, my pleasure, and my honor to have done these things and let the community allow me to do them. It's a tough work, right anymore. Thank you.
We have to make sausage. But I am happy tonight that in the back row, you'll note, the next 34-year councilperson, Alder Kitzler, will be taking over the reins. So how do you like following up? Vince Lombardi.
Twenty fifty, is that right?
Exactly. So welcome. Thank you everyone for coming out.
Thirty-two. You're younger than when I started, so you too could be thirty.
I know lots of you want to go start celebrating her departure, so we will move on to the meeting and you're, you're allowed to leave or you can watch what happens here too. But thank you very much heartfelt from everyone at the city. Next, there is no public hearing this evening. Item F is the consent agenda, which is approval of applications for 2015, 16 operator licenses. Is there a motion for approval?
No approval of the entire consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent to general, agenda has been approved. There is no unfinished business this evening under item G2, new business. Start, as you will note, for immediate action is consideration of Resolution 16 dash four dash 2095 authorizing the issuance and sale of $2,890,000 water system and sewer system revenue refunding bonds, series 2016B of the city of Monona, Dane County, Wisconsin, and providing for the payment of the bonds and other details with respect to the bond. Mark?
Yes, this is the actual last meeting, we had the authorization for Jeff to go out and look at a market and start negotiating. He came this, came back with his results. This is a refinancing of 2006 finance, we had a 20-year note. Coupon, which is basically the interest rate was between four and five percent the last 10 or 11 years. You'll see today, they're much lower than that, resulting in large savings. There's also, we had a $1.4 million bond anticipation note that was due two years from now with the market way it is right now. We look into refinancing that. We wrapped it all in one big note, a revenue bond. Let Jeff to kind of describe what our rates were we got.
First of all, I'd like to say wow. The only thing Kathy and I have in common is that I've been doing this business for 34 years. And unlike Mayor Call, I was not in fourth grade when I started. Obviously, over that 34 years, I've sat at a lot of council meetings and finance meetings and I've never seen anything like this. Although I will say, just because I feel compelled to and want to, that I sat with the then-new mayor-to-be, Rob Call, and Kathy and former mayor Metcalf, and we talked about finance and they hired me. So I'm very grateful for them to have had the opportunity to get to know many of you and to serve in a small capacity, this wonderful community as a financial advisor, banker, whatever. So it's in honor of Kathy certainly. No one will be able to replace her. I've met some wonderful people and I think Jim made the greatest comment when he said a true public servant. We need more of those kind of people. Thank you Kathy.
Thank you. For saving this money.
Yeah, we are. And in honor of Kathy, we're going to save $242,000 and some change tonight, but we've done that a few times over the history. Anytime we have an opportunity to look at taking advantage of callable bonds and a better interest rate market, we bring that to your attention. We've done so. We're here now to the point that we have issued combined two issues that were callable. And as I said, we, looks like we've saved, it looks like if you adopt the resolution, we will have saved a little over $242,000 on one of our revenue bond issues. You can take a look, if you will, at this little handout. I'll take you through quickly, but this is the debt service on the $1,440,000 that we're refinancing. You can see the coupons are two percents. In the last two years, they're two and a quarters. Once you include all issuance expenses, it comes to a TIC or a true, TIC is actually an acronym for true interest cost with all costs in of a 2.12%. If you turn the page, you'll see the debt service schedule for the remaining bonds that we're calling. They're at interest rates of four and an eighth out to five percents. And you can see it makes great sense to exchange those for two percents and two and a quarters. I included the copies of the front page of the official statements so that you can see the call features and what we're actually calling. And all that being said and done as part of this total package of financing tonight, $2 million, I want to make sure I get the right amount, $2,890,000. You will have locked into that savings and we will have amortized, or you will, you will be amortizing this remaining debt over the next 11 years at a true interest cost of 2.12%. Happy to answer any questions that you have. There are some comparables there. We've done incredibly well against those general obligation comparables. We are the only revenue bond on that sheet of comparisons. There are all other Wisconsin credits. And if you look at them and compare some of the yields, the yield to maturity are really what you want to compare. And our maturity being August versus some earlier ones, we did incredibly well for a revenue bond issue against all those GO issues. Happy to answer any questions.
I would also note that a personnel and finance, this was approved. Start for immediate action, I would.
Yes.
Move to suspend rules, take this item out of order. Motion to suspend rules, take this item out of order. It's been seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
No approval.
It's a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. Would the clerk please, further discussion or questions? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Spate.
Aye.
Alder O'Connor.
Aye.
Alder Holmquist.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Hi.
Thank you Mary very much as always, Jeff.
Thank you Mary.
Good job you do.
Kathy, thank you so much. And I will miss you regardless of what you say. I will miss you.
Item 2B is consideration of Resolution 16 dash four dash 2096 approving the installation of a neon sign at the city hall for 98.7 WVMO, the voice of Monona community media. Here tonight is the head of WVMO, Lindsey Wood Davis, who I would also like to note while he approaches the podium, this night of celebrating people's honors. I want to note that Lindsey has been elected to the Wisconsin Broadcast Hall of Fame in this year's class and will be receiving his night of honors in June. Welcome Lindsey.
Very much Mr. Mayor. And let me add, because you can't stand behind this podium tonight without looking at that woman and saying, God, what you did for Monona and will do. So thank you.
Thank you.
I get to once again stand in front of this council and explain something that you didn't know that you wanted and you didn't know that you needed. This is about nine years ago when we came and said, hey, we need a radio station. I can tell you that Kathy Thomas has told me, she said, why do we need a radio station? Turned out okay, didn't it? Yep. This is about art. This is about signage. The history of neon is such that it parallels the history of radio. There's a long, long connection. And there's an opportunity to do a nice piece of neon art below the Monona sign in an appropriate way that will promote station, that will promote pride, that will promote our volunteers too. And that's one of the things that this is for. I had first spoken to the people at the UW Glass Lab. They looked at the site, then they recommended Neon Lab, who's actually within our coverage area here on Commercial Avenue. Old line neon art, you don't find it anywhere anymore. We have one left and this guy is good. And he's so excited about doing this. Tom says, this is exactly right because we brought him the WVMO logo, which if you remember was part of the contest of the call letters, what they stood for. And what you see, let's see, have we put this up? Yes. What you see there is his depiction of what the logo looks like. So this is Monona blue with the waves and the water inside the O. The idea of this is that it would stay lit most of the time. It can certainly be put on a timer if necessary. It takes less power than a fluorescent light. It is not something that's going to draw power. It does not need any maintenance from staff. It is easily taken down because it is attached to a piece of Plexiglas, so it's actually inside the building. And I would say that in some ways, this is kind of like the wonderful white horse art in further into the hallway. It's public art that accomplishes something for Monona. So that's the idea. We brought this in front of the Plan Commission, the And there's an opportunity to do a nice piece of neon art below the Monona sign in an appropriate way that will promote station, that will promote pride, that will promote our volunteers, too. And that's one of the things that this is for. I had first spoken to the people at the UW Glass Lab. They looked at the site, then they recommended Neon Lab, who's actually within our coverage area here on Commercial Avenue. Old line, neon art. You don't find it anywhere anymore. We have one left, and this guy is good. And he's so excited about doing this. Tom says this is exactly right, because we brought him the WVMO logo, which, if you remember, was part of the contest of the call letters, what they stood for. And what you see, let's see, have we put this up? Yes. What you see there is his depiction of what the logo looks like. So this is Monona blue with the waves and the water inside the O. The idea of this is that it would stay lit most of the time. It can certainly be put on a timer if necessary. It takes less power than a fluorescent light. It is not something that's going to draw power. It does not need any maintenance from staff. It is easily taken down because it is attached to a piece of Plexiglas, so it's actually inside the building. And I would say that in some ways, this is kind of like the wonderful white horse art in further into the hallway. It's public art that accomplishes something for Monona. So that's the idea. We brought this in front of the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission basically said, nope, this needs to go to the city council. We think that's just great. So here's an opportunity. I'd love to discuss it with you. I'm sure you have questions, so let them fly, because I'm excited about this.
Questions of Lindsay? Mary, anything as chair of the committee in terms of...
This was presented to the community media committee and who approved it unanimously. And I told Lindsay, let's see what the council says.
Yes, council says...
Yeah.
And it went to plan, and plan felt this was the more... Oh, I'll let Alder Bussie speak for that.
Well, at plan, it was, there wasn't anything that they would rule on. It was basically, is this something that the city council would want? It's a very, it's a very attractive sign. My concern is that, why not fire department? Why not police department? Why not city clerk on the outside of the building? You mentioned the public art inside, and if this were inside on the glass in the studio, any, this isn't like this, this is on Monona Drive that people are going to see it. People who are coming into the building, that's when, that's when you're going to notice this. Even if you're going down Schluter, you're probably not going to see the sign. Only somebody coming in. And rather than trump all the other uses within the building, would it make sense to have it inside the building along with the other public art that we have in the, in the building? And that's my two cents. May I respond to that? Which I think it's a completely legit point. But I would look at it this way. When somebody needs to respond to, needs a fire department to respond, they have one fire department. That's the Monona Fire Department. They're going to respond. If they need a police department, they have one police department, and that's the Monona Police Department that's going to respond. There are more than three dozen radio stations in this market. WVMO, though very much the voice of Monona, competes with all 36 others of those. Whenever we can get an opportunity to promote the station and at the same time tie it further to the city, we're going to take advantage of that whenever we can. We think that that Monona tie-in makes us completely unique in a world where we actually are competing with so many other signals. So that would be my one response to that.
Further questions? Alder Wood?
What's the estimated cost of the sign?
No money from, of any sort of city till on this. This will all come from contributions that will be raised and have not been raised yet, waiting for this approval.
Alder Spate?
Is it unthinkable that we, I love the sign. I think it's great. I think Jim makes an excellent point about placement. I'm, I'm not opposed to putting it there, but I do think that the placement of it is something we would want to be a little more, I'd give it a little more thought. And it seems like whether we place it in this location or anywhere else, there's no reason not to have it.
I have a question for, and direct to Chad and maybe further. If it were slightly smaller, would that make a difference? Or is it the concept? I mean, there is a way, we have a secondary model that is slightly smaller. Cole, can you put, is that it now? So this is, the letters you first saw were 13 inches tall. The city sign is 15 inches. The first sign you saw was 13 inches. This is 10 inches. It is maybe less obtrusive?
Alder Thomas?
I feel awkward speaking since it's my last meeting and I don't get to vote, but there's some things that occurred to me. And, and these are sort of almost harken back to my Plan Commission days, which is, is the purpose of the sign location, so people can locate the station? Or is it advertising? And if it's advertising, I'm not sure that I think that that's a good thing to do with a public building. And if it's location, I'd love the sign, I'm with these guys, I like the sign. But if you're going to see it, you can see it on the glass. I mean, I would almost wonder, you know, when you go in the city hall and you can see it, because you almost have to be in the city property, going in the city hall to see it in the lot there. And, and if it was for location, then I could make the same case for the fire department, for the police department, for the other city functions that occupy that building. And so I'm glad I don't have to vote on this, because I think it's a quandary, a enigma mess.
Alder Homequist?
So at the Plan Commission, I was one that agreed that signage inside a building window is not an issue for the Plan Commission to be concerned about, which is consistent with our decision-making for a variety of other businesses. And this just happens to be a nonprofit within a city function. So part of that is, although I understand that, although this is city hall and has multiple departments within that city hall, when I look at other buildings, for example, this building, I'm not sure how much we went and made discussions about different signs that may or may not end up on exterior glass of this building, although they might not be neon. I don't know if we really do that for all of our other buildings, although most of those buildings house only one department. I get that. When I first saw this sign, I had a similar reaction of positioning being directly in that upper transom window. And I would like some consideration of maybe a vertical-based one that goes down the glass next to the door as a consideration. When it's placed up at top, the way it's positioned, it does give some impression that the entry here is to that one location, rather than if it was placed on the side panel, I could see it meeting the piece about how neon and radio connects. And I get that. Every time I've walked by any radio station, that is a piece that draws your eyes to it because there's not much else that's attractive of radio stations.
Right.
So I can see that, that connection to it. And the glass outside of the door area to the side, I think is so far away that it would, it would not be useful over there. So that would be my, my additions at this point.
Alder O'Connor?
I think a large part of it is, well, it's advertising, but it's also location. I haven't been surprised how many times I've walked out of meetings here and had people ask me where the radio station is, pulling up in the parking lot. Usually when it's laid out, you know, dark out and can't find it, and I think having, having that somewhere in the window at city hall would be very helpful, because there are people out looking for it. But it does, and it promotes the radio station, too. But this is the city's radio station. It's not a private business, and we want people to listen to it.
Alder Bussie?
Was there any discussion about putting it on the exterior of the building along nickel?
The exterior of city hall? You mean on the building itself?
On the building itself. I mean, if you're after visibility and people, with all the traffic that goes to the park, to the pool, to the library, if you're after exposure, now having said that, since it would be a sign on the exterior of the building...
Yeah.
It has to go back to Plan Commission.
Unless we cut a window and put it behind...
Put it behind the window. But, I mean, if you're af, it's what you're after. To me, if I'm going to city hall, that's the only time I'm going to see that. And if you're after exposure, do you put something on the side of city hall and get the, get the exposure to that? Just...
But even when you come, when you come to city hall for something else, you see it there and go, oh, this is where the radio station is.
Put it on our tower.
Put it on top.
I love it. I love it. And then if we have a beacon...
Yeah.
...we evolve it. All right, further questions? Alder Spate?
Well, I, I just want to echo a few things. Like, I, I like Alder Homequist's notion of if we're going to keep it in the window, going off to the side on that vertical glass, and, and having it be there where the, you know, to the right side where the station is. Because I guess what I'm, I agree that if we're going to put it where you've got it, it's got to be the smaller size.
And that's fine.
Because, so I understand that, but I still have the concern, and I, I agree, putting that centered over the doors gives the wrong impression spatially for the, what the building is. And I, and I do think we should promote WVMO to the broader community. I have no problem with us advertising our public radio station on city hall. So if it were to be put on the tower or on, off-centered someplace on the building, I, I think that would be appropriate. I think this is a beautifully designed sign, so I think we should put it in a place where it's going to be prominent and enjoyed. So my concerns are entirely with what it says to put that centered over the door. I just think that's the wrong, it's the right sign, wrong location. So that, but that's just my...
So you have some food for thought, Lindsay, for the next couple of weeks?
Absolutely.
But I would leave positive.
And I want to make sure I'm, I'm hearing this correctly. So if I came back, and this is a him, this is literally thinking out loud, but if we came back and said, there's a way we can put this on the tower without any sort of interference, which is always the technical question, that's something that you'd listen to.
Alder Bussie?
Having said the tower, I'm wondering if the side of the building, no, just here, but when I think about it, if people driving, people from all over town come to the, to the parks and whatever, and if it's too tall, they're not going to see it. So...
At night, I think.
They will everywhere. Just, but, you know, Chili Festival or the Fall Festival and stuff, people are going to be here. We've got, so where could you put it? And I don't know where, but look at it. Could we put it on the outside so that people would go, oh, that's where, what is, what is that? Oh, that's where, you know? You're not getting that with this, but you could get it on the side of the building. No, but I, I don't think we were really approaching it that way. You've opened the door for us, and let's start thinking in those terms. And having said that, it's going to have to go back to Plan Commission. So, because it's going to be on the outside. Recording of this will be played to the Planning Commission?
And, and they could say Alder Bussie suggested.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have a hint who might be the head of Plan Commission next year, so it might be okay. All right, anything else of...
Thank you.
Wood Davis?
Thank you, Lindsay, and again, congratulations on your award.
Reports of committees, commissions, boards, and everyone else, staff, anyone? Leah, anything you'd want to share with us?
The Landmarks meets on Wednesday at 4:30, and Sustainability meets on Thursday at 7:30. We're meeting a little later this month and next.
Alder Spate?
Transit Commission meets on Wednesday night at 6:30.
Alder Wood?
The Library Board actually meets tomorrow night at 7 o'clock. It's going to be having a public hearing on the internet policy changes that were, that Eric had come and spoke to us about.
We won't make you come to the dinner very long.
We'll see about that. The, I did want to just mention briefly, Alder O'Connor and I, and Police Chief, and Chief Sullivan, and Detective Durman, and was there anybody?
April.
April.
April, and Larry Reed and Mary Ann Reed all went down to the city-county building last Friday and took a tour of their dispatch center and met with them, and probably be coming back at some point with a recommendation or thoughts. All right, I did just want to mention real quickly, while we got, while we were touring the call center, we actually were able to listen in on a call, a call taken by one of the call-takers, who, it was a difficult situation, someone having a seizure and their caretaker there with them, and, and she handled it with amazing professionalism, calmness, and it was very reassuring, frankly, to see, so.
Thank you all for taking that time out. Again, this is part of commitment that we're looking, zero-based budgeting. Next year, we're looking at everything, mass transit, 911 dispatch, all parts, as money gets tighter and tighter. So thank you for taking the time out. Joan?
Assessment letters have gone out to residents. Please, if you have any questions on your assessment, please call the number that's provided on the letter. City Hall doesn't have any of the new assessment figures, so we're not able to discuss that with you, because we don't have that information. The assessors do. So please contact the assessors if you have any questions. The public notice has been published of when open book is and when Board of Review will be held, so please look at the Herald Independent, and that was published last Thursday and is posted around the city.
And are homeowners notified if they're in the first batch that will have walkthroughs in that letter, or is that a separate...
That's already done. The walkthroughs have been completed.
Oh, they have?
So the, so the one quarter of the city that did have walkthroughs, all of those homeowners were contacted and those have been done, yes.
April?
There's a Save Our Lakes breakfast on Tuesday, May 3. I've got some people down. If anyone here's interested, let me know, otherwise I'll probably give it to you for Sustainability. There might be some folks there that might be interested. So let me know this week, because I'm going to turn it in.
And Public Works, too. That's an important one for them.
Yeah.
Because of streets, maintenance, stormwater, maintenance. Attorney Cole?
May 1 is Law Day, so hug your local lawyer.
I thought that was May Day.
I thought it was May Day, celebrating communism or somewhere.
Alder Bussie?
Plan Commission next Monday.
Alder Homequist?
No report.
And finally, Alder Thomas?
I turned in my key to city hall.
Okay.
So you'll be able to get it in your mailbox. I have no committee meetings coming up, and everybody is invited over to Mary Ann's after the meeting.
Welcome.
Including those in the audience.
There are no appointments tonight? Alder Thomas, would you care to make a motion for adjournment of your finding?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, second. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The meeting's adjourned. Thanks, Kathy.